Good morning. My name is Clarence Dula. I would like to start the meeting by introducing the commissioners here. My name is Clarence Dula and Gail Brown is chair, as well as Natalie Vow as the secretary. And the first thing I'd like to do as we're getting started is to approve the minutes from the March 29 meeting. So I'd like to have a motion to start removing, I mean to approve of the meeting. Gail Brown?
Yes, okay. I make the motion that we accept and approve the minutes of the March 29 minutes.
Second.
The meeting from March 29.
A second emotion.
All those in favor?
We...
Or do you do roll call?
Roll call. Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Minutes are approved. I'd like to move next to open this with LRA Board Commissioner Neil Richardson, Executive Director. Is this yours?
No, we're just right here.
Okay. Other than that, I'd like to start, start the meeting with the commissioners. Reported the commissioners?
No report.
No report at this time.
We can begin with that.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak before we start?
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner.
Number 15?
Only if we have questions.
Only if we have questions, okay.
Get started with the offers.
No one online. Okay.
Commissioners, I ask that we start with the offers to purchase. Okay?
Yes.
With commissioners, we have offers here to purchase. Our first, the section in terms of our offers, our offers are parcels that are owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied ground or physical structures. The offers have submitted offers to purchase with the intention of rehabbing properties as residential or commercial projects, an extension of their yard space, community gardens, or green spaces to enhance and beautify the community. The first section that we'll review is under the title "New Construction." The first project that we have is an offer that's submitted by Kenneth M. and Darlene Watkins. And I'd like to, based on the information that you have presented in front of you for the three parcels on gaino, I'd like to make a motion that we accept their offer with closing being contingent upon plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second property we have is 3515 Barrett Street from Eagles Nest Retirement Center. And based on the information that you have there before you, I'd like to make a motion that we accept a 12-month option for a price of $5,625 with closing being contingent upon plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Roll call, please. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
In our next section, we have "As Is Rehab Properties." And under the "As Is Rehab Program," our Class A residential building, up to six units, no more than one building with no more than two contiguous lots, or one commercial building. The first parcel, number three, that we have in this section is from Morris D. Dejanet, and it's for 4535 Cherry Avenue. Based on the information that we have, I make the motion that we accept this offer with closing being contingent upon budget and financing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number four, we have the property address 4482 West Bell Place, submitted by Burnell Enterprise. And based on the information that we have, I make the motion that we accept this offer contingent upon a signed demolition contract and closing being contingent upon budget and financing.
Second.
Roll call, please. Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have multiple offer here for 2231 University Street care of Jason R. Johnson. And the offer two is submitted on behalf of William Jones. I'd like to, based on the information that we have, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the offer from Jason Johnson with acceptance being contingent upon, I'm sorry, with closing being contingent upon budget and financing.
Second.
And that, go ahead.
You can move previous.
Previous roll. Um, next, as that was one of two, as that was one of two, I would like to make the motion that we reject item number six in lieu of us just accepting offer number five. Do you have a second?
Just a second. I'm switching between screens here. Um, second.
Previous roll. Motion carries.
If you don't mind, can we just do roll call votes for each of these for this meeting just because I have so many screens going right now and I'm working from my phone?
Call for the roll, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Vow? Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have multiple offers for 1909 East Grand, that's item number seven. Our first offer on that property is from David Brandon. The second offer, number eight, is from Linda Given. And the third property that we have is from Lenora C. Mohammed, and that is item number three, I'm sorry, item number nine. I'd like to make the motion that we reject items number, offer six, seven, and that we, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that we reject offer number seven, eight, and that we accept offer number nine with offer being contingent of budget and financing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Vow?
Okay. So move.
Next, we have item number 10. Property address is 2630 Palm Street from Tanisha Green and Tori Edwards. Based on the information that we have, I'd like to make the motion that we reject this offer due to lack of proof of sufficient funds to support the project. Do you have a second?
Uh, this is the 2630 Palm, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number 11, you have the items that the property addresses presented. There, these are properties that, from Harold Wilson. And I'd like to make the motion that we defer this offer pending community input.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll, roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Vow? Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number 11, you have the items that the property addresses presented. There, these are properties that, from Harold Wilson. And I'd like to make the motion that we defer this offer pending community input.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll, roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have a triple offer, and this is for 5939 Sherry Avenue, and for, and that's submitted by Cheryl Walker. We have another one submitted by 459, I'm sorry, this is not correct, um, fifty, yeah, another one for 5939 Sherry Avenue, submitted by Melvin Carr, as well as, um, a third one, it was one of three. Okay. Um, and for, from Ladonna Parker, I'm sorry, I'm missing this here. I see that...
It was a number 11 to get that.
A number 11, okay, as a part of the set, okay. I'm looking at all of these, and it appears that each one of them is requiring community input and review, so... Yes, okay, so 12, 13, and 14, I'd like to make the motion that we defer those offers until we can receive community input.
Second.
Do you have a second? Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
David, is that okay?
Yeah, and 14 is a deferral, just as long as it's not...
Yeah, yeah, is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, all right. Uh, next section we have is under the heading "Development." And under our development program, we have offers for parcels owned by LRA that consist of physical structures, single-family residence side lots, two families, four families, et cetera, for rehab and/or construction of any combination of the following: rehab and/or construction of mixed-use buildings, rehab and/or construction of multiple residential buildings, rehab of residential buildings with more than six units, and/or commercial projects. So the first project we have under this category, item number 15, is submitted on behalf of African Peoples Education Defense Fund. And you see there the parcels that are listed here below on West Florissant. Based on the information that we've been presented, I'd like to make the motion that we accept a, make, we accept this offer of $3,000 on a 24-month option with closing being contingent upon plans, budget, and financing.
Do you have a second, please?
Second, and just one question.
Okay.
Um, is there a reason that this one, do we typically do 12-month options? And is there a reason this one is 24, or are we moving toward 24-month options?
So Commissioner Vow, this is Director Knuckles. The opportunity to supply, provide a longer option is something that we've discussed as a body to ensure that folks have the appropriate amount of time to secure the capital required to move forward. More importantly, that any opportunity, the developer or the owners, the offerer, I should say, at any point in time prior to that 24 months are in a position to close, they will have the opportunity to close prior to that 24-month timeframe.
Okay, so this is, so this is something that we're moving toward for, just in general, for people who need maybe a little extra time to make sure they're able to get things together, if I understood you correctly?
Yes, ma'am. And you also, as a body, approve for an approach for life tech deals to actually extend further beyond two years. And so, as those come up, we'll explore the timing on that options as those type of development projects are brought forward.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay. Do you have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have item number 16, and this is an offer that we're going to consider with item number 27. And I'd like to make the motion that we defer this offer along with item number 27 in our packet contingent upon receiving community engagement.
Actually, Commissioner, Commissioner Brown, it is the request to, of the body to defer items 16 and items 27 as there has been development opportunities that has been brought forward that SODC and LRA need to explore and then consider the offers on the table as a part of that in a more strategic discussion with these offers. So that is the request, this is deferred to allow LRA staff to engage with the SODC staff to explore options.
Okay. So there, I think there is someone in the chat who wanted to speak on those. Are we going to ask them to come back at a future meeting, or would you like to hear them now?
Commissioner Vow, that communication has already been made to the individual representing TNT Auto, that we will reach out to them within the next 48 hours to engage about this site.
Thank you.
That happened in chat. Yes, ma'am.
So move. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next section that we have, Section D, under the heading "General Lot Purchase Program." And under the General Lot Purchase Program, this provides guidelines for the sale of LRA lots Class A for any purpose other than new construction, building, or development. The first lot that we have in this category is from Oscar Rias Olivia and Sandy A. Vicoteo Rodriguez for 6418 Idaho Avenue. I'd like to make a motion that we counter the offer of $2,004,531, a 12-month option contingent upon completion of property at 6422 Idaho.
Do you have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have 3141 Osage, this item number 18, submitted on behalf of Salvador L. Thomas. And I'd like to present and make a motion for a counter offer of $6,535 with closing being contingent upon plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have 3141 Osage, this item number 18, submitted on behalf of Salvador L. Thomas. And I'd like to present and make a motion for a counter offer of $6,535 with closing being contingent upon plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number 19, we have the property address 2107 Adelaide Avenue, submitted by Tony Stovall. And I'd like to make a counter offer, make a motion that we counter their offer for $2,392 with closing being contingent upon paving and fencing of the lot.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Vow?
Yes.
Item num, sorry. Item number 20, 4232 Warren, as well as 4234 Warren. And I'd like to make the motion based on the information that we have been presented to reject this offer due to future development.
Second, may I have a second, please?
Second, and I just want to clarify, we, we have that in consideration for future development, but there is not any actual development going on currently, correct?
Correct.
Do you have additional? Commissioner, do you have additional comments?
No, that, that was it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Vow? No.
Motion carries.
Next, we have item number 21, property address 4854 Lee Avenue, submitted by Shemel Taylor. And I'd like to make a motion that we counter their offer for $4,498.66 with closing being contingent upon budget and financing.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
No.
Motion carries.
Next, we have property address, item number 22, property address 7951 North Broadway Street, submitted by Lovey Ice Cream and Eatery care of LaShonda Gibson. I'd like to make the motion that we accept the offer with closing being contingent upon paving, fencing, landscaping, budget, and financing.
Do you have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Vow? Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have item number 23, property address 4721 Couples Place, submitted by Renetta Ralph Covington and Tanisha M. Covington, as well as 4735 Couples Place. I make the motion based on the information that we have that we reject the offer due to future development.
Do you have a second, please?
Second, but again, to clarify, there is no development going on there, it's just that we are hoping that something happens due to zoning or due to the area?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
No.
Motion carries.
Next, we have item 24, the property address is 4245 Market Street, and that's submitted by Ernest Adams and Carolyn Kelly. And I'd like to make a motion that we counter their offer for $1,413 with closing being contingent upon plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes.
Commissioner Vow?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have item number 25, property 5372 Union Boulevard and 5403 Claxton Avenue. And I'd like to make a motion that we counter the first one, 5372 Union, for $2,131 with closing being contingent upon paving, fencing, and landscaping, and that we reject property 5403 Claxton due to future development.
Second, with questions. So 5372 Union, I believe, came up last time. Mr. Richard Thomas wanted to buy that, but it wasn't eligible for the side lot program. We said we would get back to him and offer it to him as a regular lot, or I'm not really sure how that all shook out. As we were going through these discussions, one of the things that came up is, you know, what if two neighbors want to buy the same adjacent property or nearby? So I just want to make sure that we're being equitable in our approach if we're countering this offer, but we rejected the other one. Can you, I guess, explain a little bit to me about the thought process there?
Commissioner Vow, this is Director Knuckles. The respondent who applied for the side lot did not reapply for the program and the appropriate structure, for the appropriate program. So this is the offer that was received for 5372, and it was communicated to the previous offerers that offered as a side lot that they would need to be offered in this program. And they did.
Commissioner Vow?
I'm sorry, you cut out there a little bit at the end.
So Commissioner, I just, I stated that the...
Commissioner Bowe?
I'm sorry, you cut out there a little bit at the end.
So Commissioner, I just, I stated that, uh, the previous offer did receive communication around their ability to reapply, uh, for this specific parcel using the appropriate program, uh, and they opted not to submit an offer under the appropriate program because this lot is not eligible based upon the side lot program that was originally to have offered under.
Commissioner, oh.
So the original offerer did not want to buy it as just a lot, but only if it was eligible for the side lot program?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Roll call? Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we have item number twenty-six, property address nine eighteen Tyler Street, uh, submitted by Guzzella Empire LLC care of Dever Robinson, and I'd like to make the motion, uh, that we reject this offer, uh, in, until current projects are completed.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Item twenty-seven, as we had discussed earlier, is included with item number sixteen, and we are deferring that until there's discussion with LRA staff.
You have a second?
So next, we have, next, we have the side lot program, and under the side lot program, we have parcels that are owned, that are owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied grounds that are too small to support new construction. These non-billable lots are parcels that are less than four thousand square feet and cannot be contiguous to another LRA parcel. These lots are made available and affordable to adjacent property owners to be used as a side lot and expand personal property. The lots are approved for sale by the LRA Board of Commissioners. Uh, the first, uh, parcel that we have under this category is item number twenty-eight, property address forty-three seventy-nine Penrose, submitted by Cheryl Christian, and I make the motion that we, uh, accept the offer.
Second.
You have a second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Under our next category, we have the category F, Option Renewal. Under this category, we are reviewing offers, uh, requests for additional time to complete projects due to construction delays, funding, on op-, uh, on options that are near expiration. Offers must display proof of consistent progress to receive renewals of options and extensions of time. Uh, the first property we have in this category is item number twenty-nine, forty-one forty-nine Delmar Avenue. Uh, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the second request for a twelve-month option for the three thousand seven hundred and fifty-dollar offer, uh, with the closing being contingent upon plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
You have a second, okay, roll call, please?
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Item number thirty, you have the addresses there before you, uh, on Newberry Terrace, we have a second option renewal request submitted by Lewis Place PF ABC Joint Venture care of Laverne Henderson, and I'd like to make the motion that we accept the twelve-month option, uh, with closing being contingent upon plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Yep, okay. Previous roll? Oh, roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Item number thirty-one, you have the various properties that, uh, there in Exhibit A presented from Floor de Lee Development, Laura Hughes, and I'd like to make the motion that we accept another twelve-month option for twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars with closing being contingent upon plans, budget, and financing. You have a second?
Second. Second.
Roll call, okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Abstain.
Motion carries?
Item number thirty-two, uh, you have the various property addresses submitted as Exhibit A in your packet here. Uh, I'd like to make the motion that we accept item number thirty-two, submitted by Lutheran Development Group, uh, acceptance of a ten thousand dollar, twelve-month option with closing being contingent upon plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Our next section, Section G, uh, under the heading Prop NS Stabilized Buildings, uh, under this heading, uh, this program, the Prop NS Program is a strategic initiative with a goal of stabilizing vacant residential buildings owned by the City of St. Louis Land Realization Authority, which offers them for sale. The program was established by a community-initiated and voter-approved ordinance to create a dedicated source of funding to make it possible for LRA to improve properties within the city's land bank of vacant buildings. This investment is intended to increase the likelihood that these properties will be purchased by private parties who will then finish their rehab and transform cu- current deteriorating buildings into decent housing for their communities. Um, we have multiple offers here, um, for Page, uh, the first property we have, uh, is fifty-eight fifty-four Page under, uh, item number thirty-three. Uh, we have, uh, an offer submitted by Taras Robinson, uh, by, uh, B, item B is Gregory R. Lanoide and Chelseaa Lanoide, and C, Brent Solberg. I'd like to make, uh, the motion that we, uh, reject item A and B, and, um, that we reject also item C. We reject A, uh, due to approval of rehab property, um, that was done on March twenty-ninth at the LRA Board meeting, and then we're rejecting item B, uh, due to lack of proof of sufficient resources, and then we're rejecting C, um, due to approval of another offer that's been submitted.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
So, just as a point of clarity, this, these were all offers on fifty-eight fourteen Page Avenue, and that property is not being sold on this agenda at all, correct?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Did you hear that, Commissioner Brown? I mean, Commissioner Bowe?
Okay.
Okay, okay. Roll call, please? Oh, do that. We did that, okay.
Okay. Item number twen- thirty-four, uh, we have, again, multiple offers on, on that. Um, item number thirty-four, we have fifty-nine twenty through twenty-two Plymouth Avenue. Uh, we have an offer submitted by Brent Solberg, as well as an offer submitted by Evan Washington. Like to make the motion that we, uh, reject, um, these offers, uh, reject, uh, offer from Brent Solberg, rejection due to approval of another offer, um, as well as, uh, B, Evan Washington, we reject that due to condition of other city-owned properties.
You have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we have property forty-seven thirty-nine Newcom Place, and that is item number thirty-five, forty-seven thirty-nine Newcom Place, uh, an offer submitted by Brent Solberg, and I'd like to make the motion that we accept this offer with closing being contingent upon budget and financing.
You have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call, roll call, please?
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Item number thirty-six, we have multiple offers on forty-two thirty-nine Lee Avenue, uh, offer from, uh, Brandon Jones, uh, offer from Cord- Cordy Clark and Dorie Robinson. Like to make the motion that we reject the offer from Brandon Jones due to lack of proof of sufficient funds to complete the project, uh, that we reject, um, for the same reason, um, Cordy Clark, uh, offer B, and that we reject, uh, offer C from Doris Robinson due to incomplete other project city projects. You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes. Wait, I'm sorry.
Motion carries?
I'm sorry, let me abstain on that one.
Motion carries?
Next, item number thirty-seven, uh, we have, again, multiple offers on that property. Um, like to make the motion that, uh, the offer for, uh, forty-seven twenty-nine submitted by Brent Solberg, uh, that we reject that, uh, due to the approval of another offer. We approved forty-seven thirty-nine Newcom, uh, and then we reject, um, Evan Washington's offer, and that's, uh, rejection due to condition of other city-owned properties.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we have item number thirty-eight, property address forty-eight twenty-two Labity, and that is submitted by Brent Solberg, and I am, uh, would like to make the motion that we reject the offer, uh, due to approval of another offer, uh, that we approved at forty-seven thirty-nine Newcom.
Second.
You have a second, roll call, please?
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Item number thirty-nine, we have property address fifty-four forty-eight Gilmore Avenue, and the offer submitted by LaGetra Smith. I'd like to make a motion that we accept that offer with closing being contingent upon budget and financing.
Second. Yeah, second with a question. Um, I, I don't want to get too far into the personal or, um, private information that is protected and confidential, um, but I am confused on, there are some other offers that we have turned down, um, with people who we say do not have sufficient funding, and usually I would like to give everyone a chance, and it seems like we are giving this person a chance, um, even though we're not being completely consistent with that. I think that's about all I can say without violating any sort of confidential information.
All right. Thanks, thanks for that. Roll call, please? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries?
We have multiple offers, uh, for the next item, item number forty, property address fourteen fifty-four through fifty-six Rowan Avenue. Uh, we have an offer from Evan Washington, and as well as Brent Solberg. I make the motion that we reject the offer from Evan Washington due to condition of other properties, and reject the offer submitted by Brent Solberg due to approval of another offer. We approved, uh, forty-seven thirty-nine Newcom.
Second.
You have a second? Roll call, please?
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Item number forty-one, sixty-one seventy-six Lara, submitted by Evan Washington. Like to make the motion that, uh, we reject this offer due to condition of other city-owned properties.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Commissioner Dula?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we have item number forty-two, and we have multiple offers on item number forty-two, uh, A, B, C, and D, A Victor Ovo, and B, David Nemec and Priscilla Nemec, uh, C, Ronald York, and D, Michael Lawrence. I'd like to make the motion that- I'd like to make the motion that we reject item A, B, and C in favor of item D. Offer D submitted by Michael Lawrence, and that we accept Michael Lawrence's offer contingent upon budget and financing. Closing contingent upon budget and financing.
Second.
Have a second? Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Motion carries?
Item H, uh, under the heading donations. Donations are parcels which consist of unoccupied ground or structures owned by constituents who desire to donate due to no longer wanting the property or they are incapable of maintaining the upkeep. The donation is entered into the LRA inventory and sold using the LRA process. Uh, item number forty-three, uh, under this heading, uh, for, the property address is forty-twenty Kinderly Avenue, submitted by Diana Shannon, and I'd like to make the motion that we accept this donation.
Second.
Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Motion carries?
Next commissioners on our agendas, we have items, uh, number forty-eight through forty... I'm sorry, item number forty-four through forty-eight, and these were previous offers prior to LRA pause. Uh, I am asking that we look at all of these, and I'd like to make the motion that we defer item forty-four through forty-eight.
Second, and just for clarity, that is so that we can engage with the community or we can have the potential offers engage with their communities, correct?
Correct. Okay. Item... Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Yeah, yeah, there's a second.
Okay, all right. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries?
Item number forty-nine. We have, uh, new offer here, counter offer here. Um, we have a, the property address of forty-thirty Inright, forty-thirty-six, forty-thirty-eight, uh, Inright Avenue. Um, and that is submitted by Twenty Twenty Vision Property Development, and I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we accept the counter offer, uh, of seven thousand dollars with closing being contingent upon fencing, paving, and landscaping.
Second.
Have a second?
And I just had a question on this one.
Okay.
Um, so this, am I correct? This needs to go to the appointing authorities because it's significantly lower than the appraised value?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, and maybe this is a question for David, but, um, could you explain more about the appointing authorities and how that works?
If, uh, um, if the board desires to sell a property at less than two-thirds of the value of that property, two of the three of the appointing authorities have to actually approve that directly. The appointing authorities are the mayor, the comptroller, and the school board. So, two of those three entities need to actually provide their written approval of the offer for it to be valid.
And so, we are sending that to all three then? Um, and then we need at least two to sign?
I believe the practice has been to seek the approval of the mayor and the comptroller.
Is there a reason we're not including the school board in these decisions?
Uh, Commissioner Bow, I would say this is not the form to have that in session.
It is a public forum, so I, I would think that that's a publicly relevant, uh, question right now. But if you'd rather have that privately, that's okay with me.
Okay. That concludes our properties.
I think we need a vote.
Okay.
Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Motion carries?
That concludes our property offers. Uh, next, we have, uh, commissioners. Next, we have resolutions that have been submitted. Uh, the first resolution that we have, um, on our agenda, um, item number J, item J, uh, and that resolution number twenty-three LRA fifty. And this is a resolution authorize and approve the renewal of corpetive agreement between the Land Realization Authority of the City of St. Louis, Missouri, the Missouri Department of Conservation, uh, of the State of Missouri, the City of St. Louis, and the Missouri Conservation Heritage. Um, I'd like to make the motion, uh, with comment, uh, if our, uh, director would like to make comments, uh, I make the motion that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Motion carries?
Our next resolution, uh, that we have before us is Resolution Number Twenty-three LRA Fifty-One. Um, this resolution, the Land Realization Commission has authority, um, to classify all of its parcels and owns into categories including the C in the LRA inventory as required by the municipal land utilization, uh, statute. Uh, this resolution requests approval for the LRA properties located in the areas listed in Exhibit A, and you have that in your packet there, um, attached here to and incorporated herein by reference to be classified C for twelve months. Um, I'd like to, uh, make the motion that we approve this resolution.
Second, but I'm having... I'm having trouble opening the file. So, but I do second your motion.
Okay.
All right. Roll call, please. Yes?
Yes.
Abstain.
Motion carries?
Our next resolution that we have is Resolution Number Twenty-three LRA Fifty-Two. This resolution authorizes adoption of this shortlist from which LRA may secure applicable engineering services as required. Um, on this one, I don't know if our director would like to provide some additional clarification.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, commissioners, uh, the resolution you have in front of you, uh, is one coming from our colleague Peter Phillips, who's the Vice President of Strategic Development. And as a part of us, for, uh, to identify LRA properties that will actively develop, uh, including sites such as Saraloo Cafe, uh, Welston Loop Station, uh, Chuck Berry House. Uh, this allows us to secure the environmental and structural services, to get those parcels assessed for structural capability, and then issue RFPs to have those structures stabilized. And so, our ability to approve this list allows us to move forward, uh, as an organization, to leverage this shortlist to procure those services to do that work on behalf of the LRA.
Uh, good morning, this is Peter Phillips. Uh, thank you, Lance. I just wanted to interject with one thing. This does not cover the environmental assessments.
Oh, yes, thank you.
That will be a separate, that will be a separate shortlist that'll be brought to the board after that, uh, request for qualifications and evaluation process has been completed. Uh, we separated those out just due, due to the nature of the actual activities. Um, but, so that the environmental aspect and the engineering regarding the assessments will be coming to the board in a separate resolution. This is strictly, the, the more relevant activities, uh, like Lance said, is gonna, is gonna be structural assessments, possibly, uh, land surveying, boundary, um, and maybe possibly subdivision and replating, things of that nature. And then, uh, as another point of, uh, context, uh, this allows us to just be more efficient with our selecting and, uh, of the potential firms, but each individual contract for any of these services are still, uh, individually negotiated, and all contracts over the amount of twenty thousand for any, you know, projects will be brought to the board for review and approval.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Uh, our motion stands. Do we have a second?
Second with a follow-up question. Um, so, I, I believe the selection committee convened in January or was formed in January?
The solicitation went out, uh, well, the SLDC board approved, uh, the original solicitation and the, and the creation of the selection committee back in January. The selection committee was not actually convened until earlier this month, um, and then the results were, uh, the responses were evaluated, and then the recommendations presented to the SLDC board last week for their review and approval. And since they, the SLDC board adopted this shortlist, we are bringing the same shortlist and process to the other boards for their review and consideration.
Um, so I guess how many organizations applied or how many contractors applied?
There were sixteen total responses.
Sixteen for that RFP?
Uh, yes, correct, yeah. For the request for qualifications, sixteen firms responded, and twelve were recommended for, uh, inclusion on the shortlist.
Um, and how is the selection committee chosen? Did we have any community involvement? Or, um, was it mostly just members of SLDC and SLDC employees?
It, it was SLDC staff, senior staff.
Got it. Um, and could you tell me a little bit about the, I guess, the rubric you used to make those determinations? Were we looking at minority-owned firms? Were we looking at experience? Were we looking at locally-based firms? Um, what kind of factors determine that, other than that they're qualified to perform the work?
Sure, uh, the, one of the, there was a, a, there were points assigned related to the actual completeness and, uh, fullness of the responsiveness of the response. Then there was related to capacity, which is their proximity, location into the city. How many staff do they have dedicated to these kinds of services? There was also the personal experience and qualifications of the individual persons they, they listed to be the project managers or, you know, contact persons for any projects in the future. And then there were, uh, it, we asked for specific project experience for, um, relevant projects and for the, for the types of things that we're asking for, and they had to give very specific information about those projects and their role. And all of those things were taken into account, um, in the evaluation of this, of their response.
So, if I'm understanding, the shortlist is, um, basically to save us from having to do a whole bunch of RFP calls every time we have a project?
Yes, correct.
Um... So, if there are fir- firms that are not on this list, if I'm understanding the twenty thousand dollar cap, um, for, you know, a nineteen thousand dollar job, for example, um, they would not get a chance to apply for those RFPs? It would only be the ones that are on the shortlist?
So, actually, in general, if, if, well, first of all, this is only for, I, I, I wouldn't say large projects. If there's a, if there's a massive, you know, public, large project that we're seeking engineering services for, that would actually be put out as a separate, probably, you know, probably as a separate request for qualifications and bid. This is more so for like one-off situations or for individual properties that LRA may want to, uh, evaluate, whether it be structurally or what, or what have you. But the intent is for those that are on this shortlist to be engaged and negotiate a contract for those services, whether it be below twenty thousand or above. Um, so, the only time that anyone that would not be on this list that would be eligible to be engaged for contracts would be is if we did go out and publicly bid it.
Got it. About how many, um, RFPs of this nature do you put out? That we're like, how much time are we saving here? How many RFPs are we saving by, by having this pre-qualified list?
It's hard to say. It is not used all that often, but I do know that with some of the state and local fiscal recovery funds that we have, that we are actually looking to do some, uh, structural and, and in the future, once we bring the environmental shortlist to some structural and environmental assessments of LRA properties that we have a better understanding of the conditions, so that when, so we are more prepared to offer accurate information to those who are making offers. Um, so, I do believe that the number of contracts that we would be looking to engage in will be a little bit higher than previous, uh, just because of the nature of us looking to use those funds and provide the information. But in the past, it has been a handful. Um, it has not been a, a, a large amount of contracts. Um, and then...
This is Director Knuckles. I'll, I'll add a little player, uh, additional context here. Uh, creating this shortlist is about allowing LRA and SODC to be responsive to market opportunity and not have to attempt to do RFPs at each moment in time. So, I want to provide a little clarity. Is that an RFQ was submitted to su- secure the shortlist, and then we would actually subsequently then negotiate any other services with these vendors upon the request of doing those services. So, I just want to provide that clarity, and this does allow us to be more responsive. And to Mr. Phillips' response, this will, these types of services will be used in greater context than we have in the past as we are proactively moving to support development versus reactive, reactionarily waiting for development to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Roll call, please. Yes?
Yes.
Abstain.
Motion carries? Uh, now, I'd like to ask for Director's report.
Uh, at this moment in time, the Director has no report to provide to this body, uh, other than the team continues to assess operational practices and working towards fine-tuning things. Uh, we are, uh, engaging with our consultants to review, uh, the upcoming modified website, uh, that'll provide more guidance and direction on the process. And so, we have that meeting, uh, with our consultant team, I believe, early next week to look at the first iteration, and we'll, uh, bring some of that information back to the commissioners prior to launching that site, uh, between now and next month's meeting.
Thank you very much for that. The, uh, next commission, commission meeting is scheduled for May thirty-first, um, of course, twenty twenty-three. And I'd like to adjourn, adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second? Okay.
Second.
Motion, all right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, so, so, so we do have to, to recognize, um...
Uh-oh, did they cut him off already?
Oh, is the meeting done?
You cut it off?
So, is Commissioner Bow still in the room?
Yeah, before you leave. Don't leave.
So, so commissioners and, and public that do want to, uh, take in a mo-
So, so commissioners and, and public that do want to, uh, take in a mo- a moment in time to, to recognize, uh, Chair Dula for his tremendous service, uh, with the LRA Commission, uh, as well as to support the SLDC Board. Uh, Mr. Dula has tenured his resignation, uh, from the LRA Board, and we're working to find someone to fill the big shoes that he has provided for this organization so far. Uh, so, Mr. Dula, there will be some things coming to you post this conversation. Uh, but want us to just publicly recognize you and thank you for your service and partnership of making sure that LRA is leading its mission of supporting business, supporting housing, supporting industry, and supporting the increase of tax revenue through leveraging the sale of LRA properties. So, thank you so very much, my friend, and don't disappear, we may have to call you back.
Thank you so much, Clarence.
I, I just need to grow some more hair, and then I'll.
Clarence, it's been a pleasure to serve with you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Commissioner Vow, did you have any, any thoughts or comments, um?
Just that we will keep in touch with you, we will track you down. Thank you so much for the work you've done.
All right, thanks, thanks very much.
And with that, I think you walk in a, sure.